Good evening, everybody. Today is September 3, 2024. This is a special city council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Bonilla if he could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand if you're able.
Before I ask the city clerk to do the roll call, I wanted to first formally apologize for my rather casual, you know, when Councilmember Cyrup comes to the council meeting more formal than me is quite something, but I did not, I wasn't able to make it home to change my, to change, so I just came straight to the council meeting. With that said, Madam City Clerk, if you can please take the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.
Present.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Cyrup.
Present.
Councilmember Sermanio.
Mayor Salinas.
Present. Thank you. Next is public comment, but I'm going to hold off on public comment until we get to the public hearing since public comment, public comments are going to be on things only that are on the agenda. So next item is public hearing, which is item number one, and it's the public hearing number four to consider draft city council district maps prepared by the demographers based on input from the community for establishing district-based elections beginning in 2026 and provide direction to demographers regarding the draft maps. Discussion of election sequencing for district-based elections beginning on 20, beginning in 2026. So, Mr. City Attorney, if you can please kick this off. Or, I'm sorry, City Manager, if you can take, kick this off.
Sure. Quickly, I will introduce Karen McDonald, who I know you all are familiar with. She has been our demographer through this, through this journey from Q2 data and research. She and I believe her colleague Stephen Ochoa are here in the room this evening and will be presenting to us the maps that have been developed for council's consideration and be able to ask any questions that we have, leading us towards the finish line next month. So, without further ado, Karen.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city staff, and members of the public. Thank you so much for having us here again. We have maps for you, and we're going to split this presentation. I'm going to do the first few slides, and then I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Stephen, who actually put these maps together, so he knows them a lot better than I do, and he'll walk you through it. I just wanted you to know that aside from this PowerPoint, since we have Stephen here with his computer, with the software on it, we are able to, again, pull up the software that he used to draw these maps, so we could look at any of the drafts, we could make some modifications on the drafts. If you wanted to see anything zoomed in, we can do that. If you wanted more information about where a particular district line is or so forth, please just ask away. If we can't do it, we'll let you know, but generally speaking, I think we're pretty well-equipped to drill down onto these maps if you have any questions, and again, make modifications live if you'd like to do that. So that is one thing I wanted to tell you, and I think with that, we're just going to get started. So, let me go to the PowerPoint, which is here, which is not here. It's not on my screen. Okay, so my, the first slide is a slide that, of course, everybody has seen, and we just put these into our PowerPoints so, as a matter of reference, so people don't have to look for the schedules. We have had a number of hearings, of course, already, and we are now on hearing number four, which is the presentation of the first drafts. We have three drafts that are on the website. They were posted many days ago, and we now also have a district viewer, by the way. We heard from one member of the public who said that the PDFs were not sufficient to really see the detailed lines about where the individual districts were, and we put a district viewer together that you can get to from maphayward.org, and it's also on the draft map page, so if you'd like to utilize that, anybody who's listening or here, please go take a look. All three drafts are on there, and we will be posting anything else that comes out of this process, also on that map viewer. Our next deadlines are after today, on September 10, which is a week from today. We would like you to please submit any other communities of interest that we perhaps have not received from, from you, and any other maps that should be considered for drawing the final maps. Then we have another week for Stephen, so after that, we have another week for Stephen to put the final maps together, and they will be posted on September 17. Then there's a little bit of time to take a look at those, familiarize yourself with the lines, and then on October 1, we will get back together here for hearing number five to finalize a map and then introduce an ordinance. And then there's a final hearing on October 8, where you will be voting to adopt the ordinance. So that is our schedule. And this is also, of course, a slide that you've seen, and just to remind you all what our districting criteria are. They're important, of course, because that's what we stick to. These are ranked criteria that are used for drawing six districts. The first criterion is always, in every districting and redistricting, equal population. So for Hayward, you take total population, you divide it by the number of districts, and then you essentially get 27,195 persons per district. That is what's called your ideal population. So that's what we're looking for when we're drawing districts. We want to be plus-minus 5% of, of the equal population, of the ideal population. Then second is compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And again, these criteria are ranked, and I wanted to say a couple of things about compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. We did go through it in some detail when I did my first presentation for you. You may recall that, and of course, that PowerPoint is available on maphayward.org. But let me just say a couple of things about this, because we actually did do an analysis under the Federal Voting Rights Act, and that is generally done before you put maps together. And as required by state and federal law, what we did first was we assessed whether it would be possible to create what's called a majority-minority district in Hayward. And a majority-minority district, so basically a district in which the, a minority, a protected minority, is the majority in a district, must be compact. So compactness, of course, is our last criterion, the lowest-ranked one, but when it comes to the Voting Rights Act, it actually kind of moves up. So for this, for this particular criterion, compactness has a special place. So you have to draw something that is compact, which means you are not allowed to draw something that has tentacles, that reaches out and just grabs, you know, minority populations and puts them into the district, and then you say, okay, now I have a majority-minority district. You don't get to do that. So we did an analysis, and we tried to figure out, can you do this? Can you draw a majority-minority district in Hayward? And we found that we cannot draw one that is compact and, and adheres to the various criteria that you need to adhere to, to actually draw a legal one. So our analysis confirmed that under a six-district configuration, you cannot draw a compact majority-minority district. And from that point on, all of our districting decisions were informed by the other traditional districting criteria, which are contiguity, respect for neighborhoods, and communities of interest, also compactness, now at a different place again in this ranked order, and, you know, sticking to natural barriers like streets. So I wanted to let you know that we did not forget about the second criterion. We did our due diligence on that, and the drafts that you're seeing, they, they comply with the districting criteria, and, and they are good to go. Doesn't mean that you like them, but they're good to go at the moment. So our criterion number three is contiguity, of course. Districts in one piece, that's usually the easiest one to understand. If you're lucky enough and you don't have a bridge or something in the middle of your city, it's easier, or some outlying islands. In our case, it's pretty easy to understand. Districts must be in one piece. Then we have respect for neighborhoods and communities of interest, and that is, of course, what we've been talking about quite a bit. We have, you know, communicated with members of the public, and people have, and thank you to the members of the public that have participated, given us a lot of feedback on communities of interest, have told us about where their neighborhoods are. And of course, we also have the official neighborhoods for the city of Hayward, and those we, we also incorporated into these map drafts. And Stephen can give you more detail about any and all of that when we go through the maps in a little more detail. And then finally, compactness. Again, keep an eye on what the district looks like, no tentacles, no reaching, nothing funny looking, you know, we don't, we don't want to be called, we don't want funny names for our district, you know. If you do have something that looks funny, you just have to be able to explain it with something that is legal, okay? So, so that's pretty much the rule of thumb on compactness. And then disregarding incumbents, candidates, and political parties, that is, of course, also one of the essential facets of the Fair Maps Act, and, you know, we did disregard incumbents, candidates, and political parties, and we have not heard from you, and so these maps are good to go at this point. So, quick note about the draft maps, need to click here, not just there. So just to know, all of the draft maps comply with the basic districting criteria. As I've mentioned, all the draft maps incorporate public input, including dozens of maps, communities of interests, and neighborhood, neighborhoods. So of course, not every map can incorporate everything that you hear. It would be too easy if that were possible, right? There's also no perfect map, even though everybody would love for there to be a perfect map, so, so there just isn't. There are probably lots of perfect maps, you know, depending on who you ask, but it just is what it is. So, districting, just by its nature, is a process of constraints. Not all of the public input in all the neighborhoods can be included and maintained in each map because population equality is the first criterion. So as an example, if you have a community of interest that is larger than your ideal population, it's outside of the plus-minus 5%, you have to split it, and that is just the way it goes. The drafts lay out the districts in different ways, so you have some choices here, and that basically just shows how the input can be accommodated, and they can be modified, as I said. And again, just wanted to thank the members of the public for sending us maps, sending us drafts, sending us feedback, sending us input, because that was extremely helpful, and we really appreciated it, and, you know, keep it coming. So I'm going to move things over to Stephen, who is going to walk you through the maps in more detail, and yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm so pleased to be here in person this time. Last time, last few times, I've been remote for hearings or workshops, so it's great to see everyone in person. So I'm going to walk through the three maps via PowerPoint, and then afterwards, I can switch over to the software, as Karen stated, and if anyone has questions in more detail, I can zoom in and out, and then we can take it from there as needed. So, starting with draft Plan One. Draft One complies with the basic districting criteria, incorporates the following direction, the following direction, public input, and communities of interest. Sorry, incorporates direction, public input, and communities of interest. The deviation is within plus or minus 5% and ranges from plus 4.22 to negative 4.07. I'm going to quickly walk through the boundaries for each of these districts for all the plans. I don't want, I just want to let you know, as I go through the, all the plans, I'm going to be pointing out some statistics regarding race and ethnicity, so you don't have to keep going back to these tables on your own, just throughout the slides, just to point them out to you. So first, Plan One, District A. This one combines the neighborhoods of Mount Eden and Glen, and Glen Eden neighborhoods, basically on the west side of Hayward. It's bounded by Hisparian Boulevard, Tennyson Road, and the 880. This district has the highest Asian citizen voting age population, or CVAP. If I do ACVAP, I'll be, that means I'll be talking about Asian CVAP. Later, if I talk about LCVAP, it'll be Latino citizen voting age population, so if I speak an acronym, just letting you know ahead of time. So this district has 44.5% Asian CVAP, plus an additional 1.6% in Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander CVAP. District B, so this next district will, contains the Longwood and Winton Grove neighborhoods, and the Southgate neighborhood, and most of the Santa Clara neighborhood. There was a small piece just along Amador Street that couldn't go in for population reasons. This district has the third highest LCVAP with a plan, with, in this plan, of, with 37.2%, very close to the second highest CVAP, which is in District C. District C, next slide. Thank you, Karen. District C contains the neighborhoods of Burbank, Jackson Triangle, and northwest Hayward, north, I should say, western North Hayward neighborhood, and downtown, bounded by Mission Boulevard, and a small piece of Santa Clara. This district has the second highest LCVAP with 37.6% within this plan. District D, this one combines the Whitman-Mossin neighborhood with the eastern portion of the, of Tennyson-Alkida, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Alquida neighborhood, which is west of a creek, which is near Miranda Boulevard. I tried to look up the name of the creek, I couldn't find it, but it's, but there's a creek going down that neighborhood, and it's near, mostly along Miranda, near Miranda Road. And this has the eastern portion of Tennyson-Harter neighborhood, basically east of Underwood and Patrick Avenue. This district has the highest LCVAP in this plan at 43.2% LCVAP, Latino citizen voting age population. District E, this is our South Hayward district. District E combines the Mission-Garen neighborhood and the Fairway Park neighborhood, and the eastern portion of the Tennyson-Alquida neighborhood, which is again, east of that creek along Miranda Road. This district, oh, going back, sorry. District E has the second highest Asian CVAP in this plan at 47, 41%. Additionally, there is a 3% Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander citizen voting age population with this. And then District F in Plan One, this is bounded by Mission Boulevard until you hit the creek around, just south of Harder Road, which is, I believe, near a cemetery. The geography would not let me just follow along Harder Road, but this district keeps all the Hayward Hills, along with the Cal State East Bay neighborhoods together, with the Mission Foothills and the Upper B Street neighborhood, along with many, much of the COIs for Prospect, they hate what they, what community members call the Prospect or Hazel communities of interest. These are community members who submitted their own COIs, communities of interest, coys. So that's Plan One. Draft Plan Two, this plan also complies with all the basic criteria and incorporates direction, public input, and communities of interest. This plan deviation is within the 5% range, going from plus 2.61% to negative 3.67%. So District, all right, so District A, this is the same District A as in Plan One, so again, it still incorporates the Mount Eden and Glen Eden neighborhoods. It's a West Hayward district bounded by Hisparian Boulevard, Tennyson Road, and the Interstate 880. And again, this district has 4.44.5% Asian CVAP and 1.6% Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander CVAP. District B, this contains most of the Longwood-Winton Grove neighborhood, there was a small cut there for population needs, the Southgate neighborhood whole, Southgate, I should say, is the neighborhood both defined here by the city and as a submitted community of interest kept together, along with the southwestern portion of the Harder-Tennyson neighborhood, which basically, is basically southwest of Schaefer Road, Cascade Street, and, and there, along a trail, there's a trail along Bishop Avenue. I don't know the name of that trail, I tried looking it up, it's a long trail. That was part of this boundary. This district has the second highest LCVAP within this plan at 36.8% LCVAP. District C, this is the neighbor, these contains the neighborhoods of Santa Clara, Burbank, and North Hayward, and it contains multiple COIs describing the Prospect Downtown areas, all kept whole within this district. So the boundary, you'll see towards the east, follow the communities of interest that were submitted by community members, and also very closely follows the Upper B Street and downtown neighborhood boundary. That's District C. District D, District D combines the Winton-Mossin neighborhood with Jackson Triangle, and the northern portion of the Tennyson-Alquida neighborhood, which is just northeast of Schaefer, Cascade, and the, and the trail along Bishop Avenue. This district has the highest LCVAP within this plan at 41.8% LCVAP. District E, our South Hayward district, this one combines the Fairway Park and Tennyson-Alquida neighborhoods. This district has the second highest Asian CVAP within this, within this plan at 36.8% Asian CVAP, plus an additional 3.8% Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander CVAP. I should also note, this district was actually a submitted district from one of our workshops for the, by some Fairway Park folks. And District F in Plan Two, this is, contains Upper B Street, the Mission Foothills, the Hayward Highland, the Hayward Hills, and the Mission-Garen neighborhoods. Again, it keeps the coys for the Hayward Hills and the Cal State East Bay communities that were submitted also kept together. And finally, our Plan Draft Three. This draft complies with basic district criterias, incorporates direction, public input, and communities of interest. This deviation is, the plan deviation is within the plus or minus 5% deviation range, with a range of plus 3.88% to negative 3.88%. That one just worked out very evenly that way. District A, so District A, this is a configuration where West Hayward is put into two districts to give you choices, but District A, this is a, this combines Santa Clara, Longwood, Winton Grove, and Mount Eden, all, and north Southgate, bounded by the 92 Freeway. So this whole district is bounded by 92, Jackson Street, and then the Pacific, Union Pacific Railroad. This district has the second highest LCVAP at 33.9% LCVAP. District B contains the Glen Eden neighborhood with south Southgate neighborhood, south of Jackson Street, and the west, western part of, west of, the west, a western part of Harder-Tennyson neighborhood, which is west of Underwood, Gadding, and Patrick Avenues. This district is the second highest Asian CVAP with 40.6% Asian CVAP, and it has an additional 2% of Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander CVAP. District C contains the neighborhoods of North Hayward, Burbank, and most of Jackson Triangle, just north of Berry Avenue. It contains multiple, the multiple COIs described by community members around that Prospect Downtown Hazel communities, and they're all kept whole in this district. District D, this, this is the Whitman-Mossin neighborhood with the eastern part of the Harder-Tennyson neighborhood, which again, is east of Underwood, Gadding, and Patrick Avenue, and has a small part of Jackson Triangle, which is south of Berry Avenue. This district has the highest LCVAP in this plan at 44.5% LCVAP. District E, this combines the southern part of the Mission-Garen community, which is mostly south of Tennyson Road and 13th, I'm sorry, 16th Street, that's where the division is within the Mission-Garen neighborhood, and it has the Fairway Park neighborhoods and communities of interest, and the eastern portion of the Tennyson-Alquida neighborhood, which is again, east of the creek along Miranda Road. This district has the highest Asian CVAP in this plan at 41.5% plus 2.8% Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander CVAP. And then District F, this is, this contains Upper B Street, the Mission Foothills, Hayward Highlands, Hayward Hills, and the northern part of the Mission-Garen neighborhood. And this one is generally bounded by the Bart Rail, and, and that parts the Mission Road. All right, so that's it with the district overview. I can switch over to the software if you have, if you wish to zoom in, or whatever you guys are ready for now.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Before I call on my colleagues up here, I'd like to first go to public comment. I have two cards here. The first card is Chuck Purvis.
Thank you. I'll just get right into it. I'll push the button. Is it good? Okay. Plan One and Plan Two do a great job in keeping the Eden neighborhoods together, Mount Eden, Glen Eden.
Is it good? Okay. Plan 1 and Plan 2 do a great job in keeping the Eden neighborhoods together, Mount Eden, Glen Eden, and Eden Shores. I think that's a very positive aspect of this. Plan 1, on the other hand, splits downtown Hayward in two along Mission Boulevard. The eastern half of downtown is included in the Upper B Street foothill district, and the western half combines North Hayward, Burbank, and and with the, with the Jackson Triangle. I would, I would rather just not see downtown Hayward split in two. Plan 2, in my opinion, does the best job in not splitting downtown Hayward, that's District C, and combining it with North Hayward, Burbank, and the Santa Clara neighborhoods. Plan 2 also does a good job in District D combining the Jackson Triangle with the Whitman-Mossin neighborhoods. The oddest aspect of alternative or Plan 2 is District B, the elbow-shaped district stretching from Longwood, Winton Grove, to Harder-Tennyson. The positive aspect about this district is it's bounded on the west by Hisparian Boulevard and Tennyson on the south. So you could basically travel along the edge of this kind of awkwardly shaped district and not be interrupted. Another aspect of Plan 2, and this relates to the memo that I, that I sent to the city council earlier today, that looks at some of the housing characteristics, how many households are renter occupied versus owner occupied. Aspect, positive aspect is that three of the proposed districts, B, C, and D, are a majority of renter households. In the other two plans, renter households are the majority of the population in just two of the six districts. In Hayward, it's 53%, 47% owner versus renter. Plan 3 separates Mount Eden from Glen Eden and Eden Shores along Route 92. This has the, the effect of creating three districts that are plurality of Asian citizen voting age population. Plan 3 also creates two districts which are a plurality of two, of Latin voters. And the various versions of District F yields the only proposed city council district, which has a plurality of white, non-Hispanic voters. Districts E, which is the, the Fairway Park, Tennyson, and F, the foothills, Upper B Street, make good sense, if not great sense, in all three alternatives. If the council were to use ranked choice voting, say 5, 3, 1 points, in choosing an alternative, my recommendation would be Plan 2, Plan 3, and Plan 1. I would also recommend slight border adjustments to Plan 2 to rectify a high-low imbalance with Districts B and D. Move some blocks from District B into that Jackson Triangle district. I thank you for this opportunity, and congratulations to the study council, study demographers for leading a very open and accessible process. I was able to take the detail block to district equivalency files that they, that they produced, and was able to do some, a lot more interesting things to, to provide just more information to confuse the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dave Robinson.
Okay. Thanks for having me. So I, actually, Mr. Purvis said a bunch of things I was going to say about the maps. I went through, I like all the three maps. I think I prefer the, my ordering is a little bit different. I like the, what is map number one as my first choice, mostly because the districts are more compact. I do appreciate the use of what I think is Zilla Creek to be a boundary. I would wonder if the maps could be modified a little bit to rely more heavily on train tracks, especially because they really are barriers that do separate neighborhoods. And I think that, I don't live in Jackson Triangle, but I think it could be a trapezoid. I'd like to hear feedback on whether that would be okay. Just in general, I submitted a map at the very beginning of this process, and I am flattered that there's some things that are in common between this map and what we're seeing today. But just going down the criteria of the Fair Maps Act, this map does have more equal populations, similar CVAP numbers, the districts are more compact, and we do have more of those boundary lines. And if there are ways that we could incorporate some of those features more, just through some fine tuning of those other maps, and have maybe a little bit less of the squiggly lines that we see in the middles of, the middle of town, that would be appreciated. And then another thing that I wanted to address from the last meeting is there was, what I could tell was some kind of unease among the council members about the fact that some of these new districts are not going to have a good pipeline of candidates that, where we have, so in a lot of cases, we have the, you know, the planning commission and the task forces and so on, that can help familiarize people with the process of participating in city leadership, and that maybe there's just not a good distribution of those types of participants around town. I think we can't solve that by drawing more map lines. And so I think that we should try to have a straightforward map drawing process with the maps that we have, try to get this done in time. And if we have it done in time, then we can focus on the problem of finding ways to recruit candidates, or potential people who could take more interest in those individual districts. So I hope that that will ease the process of, of making that transition. Maybe there are ways we could have just some kind of panels or forums within each district to start to cultivate that interest. I also want to present the idea of ranked choice voting within districts, which is different from what I presented before. This is something where, as you saw, we had the little ranked choice ballot on this slide. And so when you have this process going on in a, in a single-member district, it avoids the problem of vote splitting. And so when you have protected groups who are trying to elect a candidate, they could be deterred from running if they think that, well, there's a strong candidate there, and I would just be a spoiler. Or they might, there might be several of them, and they can split their votes between a bunch of different candidates, and then none of them win, and then somebody who is less representative of the community will win because you don't get a majority. So I hope the city council will think about this. If something that could be done after we complete the map drawing process to, to make it work in time for 2026, we would have to change the, the settlement agreement. But Mr. Rafferty has told me that he might be interested in doing that. I think that the city attorneys are kind of grumpy about that idea, but I think it could be done very straightforwardly, just with like two sentences adding to this, and then that would have to be adopted just in time for the election in 2026. It could also be done by charter amendment, but I don't think we could have that process done in time. So that's my feedback, and thanks for having me.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carlos Archuleta.
Mic check, mic check. One of the things I wanted to say more importantly when it comes to this, this is whether you look at it as gerrymandering or giving the people a real voice, a lot of the people that I spoke to about this had no clue that this is going on right now. Out of, I think it's like 160,000 Hayward residents, though I believe Mr. Dave and Todd are, if I got your names wrong, are great people, trying to tell us some great information, it shouldn't only be two people out of 160-something thousand people. And if, Mr. Zermanio, if you go on your social media, you're on social media every single day bragging about Hayward. This should be something that you should be headlining your social media. You had crickets. Same for Angela Andrews, George, same for you. You know, if this was a Palestine issue, you have awesome issues, man. And when it comes to Hayward, this is the number one issue, because this is our voice. This is going to be where are politicians picking their districts that benefit them? Are they going to pick a district that is going to make them not available to run because that puts them out of their district? This is something that more than two people out of 160,000 people should be involved with. This should be all over social media. Instead of doing news conferences, Mark, about your street fairs where you jump up the numbers from like 1,000 people to 100,000, or however many you said, you should be having news conferences about how important this redistricting is for the community, because as they said, a lot of the people that are going to be written out are going to be renters, poor minorities, poor white folks too, and they don't have the voice, they don't even know what's going on. And so when it comes to the Angela Andrews, the George Syrups, the Francisco Zermanios, who are heavy on social media, I call you guys out only because of your presence on social media, people look up to you guys as kind of the balls and strikes. And if you guys are choosing to turn a blind eye on this, a lot of the population who often looks to you guys as a honorable opinion, you guys are doing a disservice to. And you guys beat the drums the hardest when it comes to how much you guys love Hayward. And so I really got to stress this, because when I look around and I see two people, two people, I think the other two are agencies because they have laptops, but if you see two people in something so important, I think there's a failure there on the leadership, and it kind of shows a pattern of how you guys want to have backdoor meetings. And again, I have to stress that the community should be involved in this. The community should be debating, they should be frustrated, they should be happy, they should be celebrated, but they should, this should be one of the most important issues this year, because it affects everybody. However, if you only have two people out of 160,000 people, that's not even a good F. That's less than 1%. That's less than, you know, like a hundredth of a percent. And so I have to say to you guys, where is your, your presence on social media about this, to let the community know, hey, this is a really important thing that's going on? And it kind of feels like, you know, I understand why one person wants to keep this silent, but the rest of you guys, a lot of the community has trust in. A lot of community members disagree with my opinions on you guys, and really look up to you guys. So I hope to see, moving forward, especially the people that already are constantly on social media, that you guys are really encouraging the community to know about this, to be involved in this, and at least have some type of unified spot on social media, because it's 2024, social media is where the conversation is having, the public square. There should be something there that, hey, this is going on, and it's going to affect your future in a major way. And more importantly, you politicians are either being sneaky about it, which in an election year is really shady, or in an election year, being really proud on how transparent and open you guys are. And as of right now, it feels like you're being really sneaky about it. So I hope that I'm proven wrong, and the guys that, and girls that love to be heavily on social media, really show how this is important on social media, and encourage the entire community, other than two members, two great people, great information, and two agencies probably back there, to encourage more than just them to come down here with their facts and show us their opinions, because they gave us great information, and, and be more involved. Appreciate that, thank you, and I hope to see that from you guys.
Thank you. Okay, so now we come up here to the deus. I don't have, I don't, I didn't have my, my laptop or my iPad, so I'll start with Councilmember Cyro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all your hard work compiling these maps. I do, you know, want to say that, you know, the public comment is heard. I want to express that, you know, we just showed a calendar of all the different public hearings we've had over the last few months to educate the community on this issue. Our staff has done a wonderful job of being downtown at street parties where there are 10,000-plus residents. I can speak for myself, knowing that the Hayward Community Coalition has had tents at multiple events, where we've spoken to hundreds of residents. We've had maps where they could actually draw in their district, and I've submitted those maps directly to staff. So I just want to really communicate that online isn't always real life. People have been on the ground, having conversations with people, and just because two people are here tonight doesn't mean that this hasn't been a very long process, where we've done our best. I mean, at a minimum, when we send out a newsletter, that's 60,000 residents that we're reaching, and I know that we've done multiple newsletters. So I just, I want to express that I think the city has done its part, given that we were forced into this process on such a short timeline, to get input from the community, and I just, you know, didn't want that to go unseated. I really appreciate Dave and Chuck being here tonight and their input throughout this process. I think I've done a lot of thinking around these maps, and it's largely been informed by a lot of the information that you've presented, so I want to also acknowledge your contributions, and thank you for being here again tonight. I think for me, Map 1 felt the most accurate to the feedback that I have heard and collected from the community, but I do think it requires a few small adjustments. And so I was wondering if we could maybe pull up Map 1 and adjust it a little bit based on some of the, some of the feedback from council last time, and some of the feedback that I had heard. And if it checks out, I'd want to have a conversation around that with the rest of my colleagues.
Could we please share the screen for Stephen's computer? Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Move the zoom window around as well. Okay, this is Map 1.
Great, thank you. So if you could zoom in to Mission Boulevard between C and D and F? Great. Okay, so before I dive into specifics here, what I want to communicate that I like about Map 1 is that it accurately reflects the South Gate community, which I feel like Map 2 doesn't, and there's a bit of a divide, and we've had residents specifically come and give comment on that. I also think that this map keeps the Jackson Triangle intact, which I think is really important, given that we've had historically very low turnout from that neighborhood. There were also requests from some Jackson Triangle residents via email to have Jackson Triangle be associated with the downtown. And while I understand Mr. Purvis's comments about not wanting to split the downtown, given how significant it is to the city, I also think it benefits the city to have two council members that feel connected or are representing the downtown as a larger city project. So I actually do agree with Dave around Map 1 being my preference, which is why I'm focusing on it here. I also want to say, one of the reasons I like Map 1, and I know we're not seeing this side of the city yet, is almost every piece of feedback that I've gotten or drawings that I've seen of, of District A or West Hayward involves everything along Hisparian. It doesn't divide Hisparian by the 92, so I feel like that would be a disservice as well. So that's, that's why I'm really zeroing in on this map. But I do think what's missing from here is there, I'd spoken with someone that had attended one of the community work sessions, and they had mentioned that some of the neighborhoods along the foothills, especially south of Carlos B here, don't necessarily feel a connection to the hills. And so in this instance, I'm wondering, given that F is oversubscribed, it has close to 5%, it's approaching the limit, if that neighborhood could be, thank you, if that neighborhood there could be incorporated into C, and then the neighborhood below that, in, in, in E could be incorporated into D. And so those neighborhoods then fall into, you're going from F into C and then E into D. Does that make sense? And so I would like to see how that affects the percentages.
Sure thing. So just, let me click. So first, I'll do this part that you were, I want to make sure I have right.
Correct.
Wish to go into, one second.
And yeah, Harder could be the boundary there, yeah.
So just note, this is just the, the odd shape of the census block right here. Just want you to know that.
Okay.
So I'm going to move that over and from F to C right now.
Correct. And I just want to see how that changes the population totals.
Oops, undo, because I was on the wrong map. No, not that one.
I'm sorry, this must be the most stressful way to do this, but, yeah.
Survey says.
Okay. So that brings us, okay.
So C becomes overpopulated.
Okay.
Plus 5.54%, and F becomes negative 1.87%.
Okay, so if we're not rock the vote too much, let's undo that change, and then can I see the change from E to D that I was recommending earlier?
Can you please restate what you, which?
So where it says Broadway and 8th Street, that neighborhood enclave, yeah, just above, yeah, that, that area, moving that into D, so that E gets closer to the average, and D gets closer to the average as well?
So just, this is the, this is a really odd.
There you go.
So if I just do that?
Yes, using the creek, I think that's a creek, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so I guess this-
That would fit into population ranges.
And they're still within their correct population ranges? Great, so that's, that's a lot more even than it was before. a lot more even than it was before. So that was me just trying to relay the rest of the feedback that I felt like wasn't incorporated from the previous council session. But zooming out, I think this is more or less the map that I would suggest moving forward with, based on, of some of the reasons that I had stated before. And I'm curious to hear what my colleagues have to say. I think that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Roach.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, thanks for your comments. I also just wanted to take note about the sort of openness of this process because of the harshness of the public comment. I think you can see from the schedule, there's been four public hearings, one virtual workshop, one in-person workshop, three street parties, and multiple social media postings, and many newsletters on this topic, including from people on this dais. And so while it may be your first time being aware of this, I think that this has been a citywide blitz from the city side and definitely from the community side. And you're right, while there's only a couple people, I mean, my experience in being involved with countywide redistricting is unfortunately, it's not one where you're going to have multiple people show up in the, in the, in the chamber. So, and I, I think sort of today's reflection is, is that. And, and I think, you know, you heard from Mr. Robinson that some of his ideas have been incorporated in this maps. I don't think any of us have submitted maps. I think this has all been done based on demographics and input from the community. So I think it couldn't have been a more open process, given the, given the quick turnaround of this. So, so I just wanted to get that out for the public record that I, I think we've sort of done our part and I think the city has done their part to make this as open as possible. So with that said, I, I really appreciate the work that's been done by the demographers to get these maps to us. I also, yeah, I mean, just on first blush, I mean, my notes were, I do like one and three. I, I like one in that it keeps South Gate together because I think we did hear from numerous community members that keeping South Gate together was important. I think Fairway Park gets a little bit weird in one, so I did want to, I did like the, wait, sorry, let me pull it back up, draft map one. Let's see. I, I think that in draft map one, I think E does go sort of too far north along Mission Boulevard. I mean, I would bring it back down to Tennyson if not industrial on that one. So let, let me just, yeah, so, so District E, I, I think I'm sort of in line with something that Councilmember Cyrop said. And District E, I would sort of either like keep that line going up Tennyson and, and, and south or just, because I think you were doing it by census tracts. Is that right when you were?
These are all drawn at census block. And again, what I have right here is the original District E map one.
Okay.
Map one, District E.
Yep.
Not the proposed change by-
Right, yeah, I know this is it, right. So what I, so I think what I would like to see as far as keeping sort of Fairway Park more, people that might identify with that, either have District E only go to Tennyson as far north that way. And then, and you know, because District E is already over, oh, it's almost 4% over, right, subscribed, is that what you say? And then, and I think, what's the one above that? It's District D. Am I in the right one? Let's see. District map one, yeah, is slightly negative. So, so yeah, so if you could cut on that one, I guess I would just go Tennyson and south. So I would do anything north of Tennyson as District, what is it, D? And then south of Tennyson, District E. Or however, you'd have to cut that by census tract.
Just clarification, Councilmember.
Yep.
So this right here is the proposed change by Councilmember Cyrop.
Okay.
This, this, this block right here, where Tennyson is.
Oh, I see. That, that almost makes it, the percentage is almost zero on both of those. So that, that might work for me.
And, and just, I just wanted to point out that the block where Tennyson is, right here?
Yep.
Is this odd shape.
I see, okay.
All the way down here.
I see. And then it does take some of like the Garin area up there. Okay, well, I'm, so this is the proposed one from the previous comments?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I mean, that actually, I see, right, because if you go up, you can't really split Tennyson because you have houses off of that either side. Okay. And, but I like that because, yeah, if you go back, at least it does sort of make those two balance as far as percentages. Okay. Okay, I can live with that. I, I don't know how people on Tennyson Road feel about that, but I, I can live with that. It still takes a little bit more north of what I would consider Fairway Park, but I could live with that. And then, let's see. So, yeah, I mean, I guess that's the tweak I would make on one. And then, let's see, let's go down to two. Sorry, I'm just. Well, I guess one question I had on all of these maps is, did you look at any districts that took the upper B Street area and put that closer to the downtown map? Because it, those two do, I mean, I'm not, I'm not proposing that, I'm just wondering why you didn't include that in more of a downtown or north, like, you know, I don't know, north part of the city. Because putting all of that together as a hill district, I was just curious why, why you came to that conclusion?
In these configurations, usually became a population need. The, the hills, the, the Cal State East Bay community, that, they needed, there needed to be total population from somewhere. So in these instances, I was just trying to stick to Mission Boulevard or Bart Rail, which I heard from the last meeting, directions were as a common dividing line. So I was just trying to use that. And then I was often focused on the community of interest boundary that was submitted by different public members.
I see. So the only other way to do it would have been gone on the other side of Mission Boulevard to, to grab the population that you need.
Right. For, just for the, this, this Highland Hills District, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then, and then draft map three, it, it, I mean, it is interesting in some ways. I find that to be the most pleasing because it sort of creates these blocks all over the city. But I do think it's a problem that South Gate gets caught up on that one. So while I do kind of like that one, I, I think at this point I'm erring towards map one with the tweaks that we talked about. But I will wait to hear what my colleagues say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Zermanio.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our two active inputters for being here today. And thank you also to Carlos for his comments. I have one question for you. Throughout this whole process, we're not supposed to be keying in on ethnic issues, but you kept mentioning Asian population, Asian population. The reason being, we're not supposed to be talking about this stuff. Just, is there a natural or am I just?
Yeah. May I answer that question?
All right.
Yeah. So, I mean, the, we're basically here because somebody brought a case to Hayward saying that the Asian community wasn't properly being presented, right? So, so of course, it's always been a factor. Race and ethnicity have been a factor in, in these proceedings. But also, race and ethnicity, while they cannot be a predominant criterion, they can and should be a criterion in these discussions. So what we are not allowed to do is just draw districts just based on race, just based on ethnicity, and then just keep everything else out of mind, right? That's that tentacle kind of thing that sometimes happens where people are just reaching, not keeping communities of interest and neighborhoods together and so forth. And so what we did is we looked at everything. And we pointed it out because I have heard from all of you that racial and ethnic fairness is, is important. We've heard it from members of the public. And so we just wanted to point that out because we gave you the demographics, they're part of the PowerPoint, and that way you didn't have to flip back and forth.
Okay. I, I perceived it as keying in on the Asian population because of the lawsuit that was brought out. So I, I'm not sure, I was impressed by it, but I leave it at that. So thank you very much. All the public hearings that we've had, and they've been mentioned by a couple of my colleagues, we have been very transparent in telling people what we are doing. And as a matter of fact, just this last Sunday, I posted on social media that we were going to have a meeting on districting today. So we've been forcibly pushed into doing this. And the question was posed, why are there only two residents here? Well, the answers are quite simple. When I receive emails and phone calls, they're concerned about public safety, homelessness, feral cats, potholes, people setting fires in one of our restaurants. They're concerned about a tree that has fallen on their property. They really are not concerned with districting because they feel that we are going to be doing the right thing. Their concern is taking away one traffic lane on Tennyson Road. They're concerned about what's happening with all the traffic. That's what our residents are concerned about. Maybe I have received three or four emails from folks, what's going to happen with districting? I said, well, this is what's going to happen. And just yesterday, I received a, an email from a, from a resident in my area saying, are you going to represent me when the district, districting comes on? I says, well, hopefully, I don't know. So anyway, but districting is not in the minds of our residents because they have other concerns and I appreciate that. Okay, so I trust our consultants, I trust my colleagues, I trust our mayor with his, and I certainly agree with our mayor and his displeasure of this whole concept. Because if you look at us, this city is run by minorities. We are a minority-run city. Why there was no need for a lawsuit. And I trust that the process is going to be such and, and the result is going to be a good one because of collective wisdom, because we are, we cannot afford millions of dollars and by not following what we're doing because of a lawsuit. And with that said, option one is my best, my best one without any changes. I appreciate some of my colleagues wanting to modify it, but I think it's the best one. It doesn't split like number three, doesn't split the western section of the, of Hayward. It keeps it together. And I think it does a good job. So option one is for me. Thank you. And thank you again for the folks who came out here and actively participated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the presentation again today. Okay, so for, you know, I also generally like map one. However, I do want to see a little bit more balance between D and E, with E being 3.88% over and then D being, you know, for, over 4% under. I think there's a better opportunity for balance between those two districts. I also like it because we have one district that has AAPI majority at 44%. I agree in keeping South Gate. What I like about this one too is it keeps South Gate and the Jackson Triangle together as a community of interest. And we've heard a lot about that in, in these meetings. Map two, I also don't have a huge heartburn over. However, what I would like to see in map two is how we would balance D a bit more to see D so underpopulated at minus 3, 6, 7%. I think that's the most underpopulated district on this map. You know, I'm not sure how we would go about maybe, you know, moving some of F's population into D if we did do that. And maybe what we do is we more closely, you know, follow the flatlands along Mission if we were going to potentially, you know, look at that. But I do like maps one and two because it also protects the Latino voting demographics with, I think map one has four of the six districts primarily Latino or plurality. And map two, I believe, has three out of six. So I think that that's a fair representation of our Latino community. And then for map three, I don't like the split between District A and District B. I think it separates West Hayward and I also don't like it because I don't think it keeps our South Gate community together. So I would go with, I can support map one with the modifications that Councilmember Cyrop recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other, oh, I apologize. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Thank you for the presentation. Just wanted to acknowledge that. I know that there's been a list of public hearings listed, but for future public hearings, just so the public can be aware, September 10th is the deadline to submit communities of interest in other maps considered for the final maps. September 17th, the final maps will be posted at maphayward.org. And October 1st will be the next public hearing at 5:30. It will be here at City Hall. And this is where we will finalize the maps and introduce the ordinance. And then October 8th will be a council meeting, a regular council meeting. And that's where we will adopt the ordinance and that will be at 7:00 PM. Also wanted to acknowledge that agendas, you can sign up for agendas at the City of Hayward website. If you're unable to sign up on the City of Hayward website to receive the agenda in your email box, you can also know that the agendas are posted online 72 hours before the meeting. And then also the agendas are posted outside of City Hall. I try to post updates every time the agenda's released. I post it on my personal social media. But we should look at the City of Hayward's agenda because it'll give you the full list, including consent items. So you can definitely sign up there. Just wanted to also acknowledge that there, there has been a lot of hard work on this. And I just want to thank staff who have provided interpreters at meetings and have provided, and these are staff members who are providing those services for folks. And just want to acknowledge their efforts from the different divisions that put in that hard work. As far as the maps, I am leaning towards map one. Specifically, I would like to see the South Gate community together as well, given that we did have some community advocacy there. Also wanted to make sure that Jackson Triangle also has a representative and that that is still connected as they would like advocacy there. And one councilmember will help support that. I do feel that I'm okay with many of the changes that my colleagues have made. Just want to make sure that the, the B, in the South Gate area, there seems to be one street or between B and D, to make sure that line makes sense because it does seem to be a jog. But everything else seems to be pretty contiguous. So that's where I'm leaning. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't sure. Yeah, Councilmember Golds.
Well, now I feel obligated. Good work with all of the mapping. It's pretty intense. I played around with it a little bit. You know, it's kind, it's kind of unfortunate that our residents feel that this is just so esoteric. It's kind of not really very interesting to them. I happen to agree with you. You know, this is a really cool opportunity for the residents to step up and say, well, I want representation because it needs to work this way. On the other hand, as Councilmembers Zermania said, our, our community trusts us to do the right thing. We, we are very open and transparent about this and I think we continue to be, not just in these hearings, but in the conversations that we have. You know, I'm talking to people that, that are in my neighborhood. I'm fielding some phone calls. I'm talking to folks representing different communities, faith communities and, and others. And, you know, we have the conversation and what we have here in the room, this is what we have. It just kind of worked out that way. But I hear you. I do. As to the maps, the only thing, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of map one with the modifications that Councilmember Cyrop suggested. The only thing I need to say is that the folks in the Mission Garin area, up in the hills anyway, really more closely identify with the issues of Hayward Highland. And it happens to be because of things like wildfire concerns. There's a lot of open space there. And the Highlands and Mission Garin neighborhood share a common problem, which is there's one road in and out, well, for Mission Garin anyway, for up, up in- anyway, for up in the hills there. So, you know, fire preparedness and emergency evacuation and issues along those lines. And then the crime patterns tend to be more similar to the hills than they are to the flatland areas. So still a concern about crime. In any event, I don't, I don't know if there's any opportunity to wrangle those borders that way. I didn't find it. If you have a way to do that, it might be, I mean, we're really only talking about a small number of homes relative to the total population, but just to...
Just I want to clarify, Councilmember. You're asking if it's possible to put the Mission Garin in with the Hills and Cal State East Bay community?
Well, I don't know if you'd have to take the whole community, but if, if, if that's possible, because you notice that white space...
That would be draft B.
Yeah, that white space, yeah. So, so in that map designation there, F seems to incorporate that area, except that Councilmember Cyrup rightfully points out that East 16th Street and those neighbors, those neighborhoods in those streets there probably more closely identify with, with Jackson Triangle, so District D. But it just happens to be, and I think Vanderbilt, Treeview, they most closely associate with Fairway Park. It's just that one area going, going up Mission, excuse me, Mission Garin, so Garin Highlands in that area. And because it directly borders onto the, the Garin Park, you know, it's 25 square miles of open space, things more of like traffic, emergency evacuation, fire preparedness, and things like that, were really kind of top of mind for them. And so, I don't know, is it possible for them to fit into the Hayward Highland?
So just, I, we can try it right now. Just, this is with, this is currently Plan One with the proposed change by Councilmember Cyrup. So you're asking if...
Do those numbers on the map mean something? I mean, is that, are those selectable?
Yes, with this current change right now, these are the, this is the district letter for the time being, it's a temporary letter, and then the deviation.
Oh, so, no, I'm not talking about the deviation, but when you zoomed in there, I saw...
Oh, yes, when I zoom in, those are the populations of the census blocks.
Oh, I see, okay. So right where it says 242 and 101, and so those areas high up in the hill, I think those guys really more closely associate with, and I have to think that those folks that live just downhill from where the, you know, park is, some of them might willingly go along with Fairway Park, but the ones that I'm talking to in the Mission Garin area seem to feel like in Bello Road, which is at the top of Garin Ave, right next to the park, those guys all more closely associate with, with the Highlands.
So what I've selected right now on the screen, if you could see, these are the blocks I would have to move, and this one right here is like one very big awkward census block, that it would be needed to get these blocks that you were referencing. And then I would have to get these two also for contiguity reasons. So I could try, apply this change, and these would be added to District F, and you could see what that would do. And this is within the Plan One. Would you like to see what this looks like?
Yeah, let's just see what it looks like.
So this makes District F plus 9.48%. So well over the plus 5% range.
So clearly, it's not going to work.
I'm going to undo the change now.
Yeah, true. I mean, everybody cares.
Is that it?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roach.
Thanks, yeah. Can you bring that back up with the map? Because it's, it's really interesting looking when you do that. I just wanted to sort of bring the point back up again that Councilmember Andrews made about the squiggly line on the west side of D. And if there, and I guess, I don't know that, you know, I'm not, I don't live in that area, so I don't know sort of how neighbors feel about that. Did you get sort of coy input from that neighborhood as far as trying to keep that line somewhere, like Gadding, or sort of curious why you chose the lines that you did on that one?
So it was part of logistics of hitting total population needs, and if I had to, if I needed population, I was doing my best to find a through line. First, I tried to find a major road if I can, or at the very least a road that goes all the way through. That's usually a line that residents can at least identify. So that was, that was kind of the part there. I also, we also received some test, some input from our workshop from the Southgate community, when the folks who defined that Southgate coy, which happens to coincide with the Southgate City neighborhood, that they, they had, those, at least those residents said they would wish to go east, so towards the Harder-Tennyson area. And so I did my best to give them some of that with the, within the population restrictions here, or within keeping this District A, at least in this draft model, keeping that District A bounded. They also said they wished to go with the Mount Eden community, but drawing this District A, I couldn't give them that. I was trying to give them at least some of the Tennyson-Harder area. And I was doing my best to find a through line.
Yeah, I see what you mean, because Gadding doesn't go all the way through. I see, but you went Patrick, right? That's, is that Patrick jogging over to Underwood?
But may...
What's, what's the line that you have the border on? What street is that?
Right now, it's on Underwood, but maybe with this changes to District D, I can at least make a Gadling all the way through.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just kind of, I guess I would want input from people in the neighborhood, or maybe people, you know, on the dice that know that area a little bit better, because, yeah, I just want to be as, you know, conscientious about that neighborhood as possible, because I don't know if that line, where is the, wait, I'm trying to think where the, I know the railroad is over there. I see.
East.
East, okay. And that's, I mean, I don't have a big preference. It was just a good point that Councilmember just brought up about that jogging. I don't know if anyone else has, sort of knows that a little bit more. Go ahead, Councilmember Andrews.
I believe on that section, that's a big parcel, right? So that, maybe that...
Sorry, Mayor.
That's why the line, that's why it drew me to that line, because it seems like it could be a clear cut to Harder straight through. Because that parcel is 1645, and I believe that's a, that's a church and school. So just wanted to see how we can just get Gadding connected all the way to Harder.
Would you like me to process this change that I highlighted? Let's see what the changes that we did to D, if this works now. Too much. Now D is under 7.8%. I could always take a different part.
Okay. I actually think that probably is better because it's less residents in that, that parcel. So there's actually, it's a church mainly, so that's okay.
Undo the change?
Undo the change. Now, I, I was curious why there was a jog. That probably is why. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Roach.
Okay. Okay. A couple things. You know, first of all, I just wanted to thank Mr. Purvis and, oh, actually, before I make my remarks, there's two, there's two online comments that I, when I did public comments, I didn't go to online comments, since there are only two comments. So before I make mine, let me go to online. First caller is Pauline Wong.
Hi. Thank you for taking my call. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I, I understand that in terms of this redistricting, it's been forced, the City of Hayward has been forced into this process. My question is, I don't know much about the lawsuit, and I was just wondering, where can I find more information regarding this lawsuit? Because it seems like this is the first time I've ever heard of it, and it's like the redistricting process is very expensive, and this seems like this one particular lawsuit seems to be pushing ups towards that direction. And I was just wondering if you can provide me with a guidance as to where I could find out more about this information?
I can, but I just want to make sure that if you're finished with your public comment.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next commenter is Archuleta Family.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to talk on this issue. I really want to agree with the person that talked about, you know, the poor attendance at these meetings. I mean, I hear you all saying that you've done a great job at doing outreach, and outreach has been great, but your attendance isn't showing that. And I think that talks about a bigger problem within the city council meetings that there is such low attendance. I've personally worked on redistricting both in 2021, and I was part of organizing residents and mobilizing them when HUSD did their redistricting. So to say that there is little to no interest in this issue is completely wrong. And I say that as someone that organized and mobilized, you know, a lot of people. When I did redistricting at the county level, we had, you know, two hours of public commenters. We had 50, 60 people speaking. People were energ, people care about this issue very deeply. At HUSD, there was, even though theirs was even a faster turnaround, there was a large turnout. There were people coming out to all these meetings. So I think it is completely false to say that people don't care about this issue. And I think it devalues the importance of what public comment is when you say that because people have a culture in Hayward of not attending these meetings unless it's something controversial. But there are issues that are happening in our city that are really important, and to say, people just trust me to make decisions for them, is a terrible thing. Because look at our city. The kids, when there was that stabbing at Hayward High, that same day, I think within those two, three days, there was three bodies found. There was, kids were freaking out because they were sharing emails everywhere. I got an email, I got a message from my son saying there was going to be a shooting, super scary. In my business, there was two businesses next to mine whose windows were busted out. So to say that they trust us, trust you to make good decisions for them, our city is not reflecting those good decisions. And though it is a lot of people of color, there's other socioeconomic factors that are not diverse on that council, and I would say that the people of color don't generally experience the same things that other people of color in Hayward are experiencing. And so it's not just about ethnicity. It's about experience and socioeconomic and education. And those things are important factors that are not being represented, and that is why districting is important, because it needs to have people that are experiencing things within their own community to have people represent them that are having that same experience. And so just because you are going through the motions and saying, well, we went to the street fair, we did this education. I tried to get into this meeting through the agenda. I had to try a bunch of different times because there's no Zoom link. You have to like copy and paste, and then it says the meeting is wrong, and then I had to go back and try to do the meeting ID. Those are barriers to access. You should be posting the meeting on Hayward social media with the Zoom link that people can just click right away. Those are things I'm telling you as someone that generally turns out tons of people to these types of meetings all the time. I generally can turn out 20 people really fast for a meeting, and that's because I make sure that those barriers that exist are eliminated, and it makes it easy for them. That's not happening, and that's not just for this meeting. You go to city council meetings any day of the week, and it's empty. And that is not good for the community. That is not good for you as decision makers because you don't get to hear what the community is actually trying to say. And the way Hayward is right now is reflective of that lack of engagement and that lack of community participation. The city that you guys represent in your social media that you guys talk about, that's not the city that we experience as residents, as business owners, as parents, as students. There's a huge disconnect. So to say that, well, you know, people that I'm in touch with say I'm doing a great job, and they trust me to make these backdoor deals with nobody watching, that's a problem in Hayward. Look at downtown next door at San Leandro. Their downtown is thriving. You see people walking around, shopping. You don't see all these empty storefronts. There is a real problem happening at Hayward. And I think the city council needs to own up to some responsibility for that, and districting is an important thing to help balance what's happening. And so just because you go through the motions of saying, well, I went to these things and the coalition said this, that doesn't mean that you're getting the results. You need to start putting barriers to access, and I'm telling you, you need to start making the Zoom more accessible and announcing these meetings more regularly, especially on the day of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just real quick regarding Ms. Wong. If you go to maphayward.org, you can read the whole process and, and the whole, the history and, you know, the policy history and, and what this is all about. But I got to tell you, I have to say, this is quite interesting that you call and you said, you know, that you had no idea, and this is sort of all new information for you, primarily, I'm just looking at the last name, but primarily because this suit was brought to us from an Asian plaintiff and who claimed to be speaking on behalf of the Asian community. And to have a caller call in and tell us that they had nothing, they had no idea that this was going on and that, you know, and there's, you know, that this is all news to them, I think is, is a powerful testament to what we've been talking about up here, at least what I've been talking about up here, about this process. That's the, my, my first comment. My second comment is, you know, I did, I did want to, you know, reemphasize, and I think, you know, my, my position up here regarding this process is no secret. And, you know, we, you know, we are going through this process because we were, we were sued, and the plaintiff is a gentleman by the name of Jack Wu, who, based on the reports that I've been getting, I should say, I should also include that Jack Wu never submitted a map to this process. And so, but I have to say, you know, the, the good work of Mr. Purvis and Mr. Robinson, they have been engaged in this process, and, and I think they have, you know, taken advantage of this. And, and so, you know, and so here we are. And, you know, and Councilmember Sermanio, I think you're absolutely correct because, you know, over the years, you know, through my work, you know, here in the city, and I would, I would say, and, you know, and I'm not self-promoting myself, but, you know, I'm a, I'm a fairly engaged person in this community, and, and I've talked to, I've been to a lot of community meetings, and I've been to, and I've stood at a lot of doorsteps. And not one time, not one time of the 14 years that I've been up here, not one time did anybody tell me, you know what, Councilman Salinas, you know what, Mayor Salinas, what we need to do in this city is redistrict it. That, that has never, ever, ever come up, ever has come up. And, and so, you know, and so here we are. And so that's why I always, I'm always amazed by, you know, callers who, you know, who don't live in Hayward, who come in on the fourth quarter at, at the 10-minute mark or the five-minute mark and, and make comments about how, you know, this is not an open process, that this is, you know, that there's no transparency, and nobody seems to know, and, you know, and so forth. Make no mistake, this process was brought to us by somebody who did not live in Hayward, right? Who did not live in Hayward. That's why we're doing this today. And in fact, the person who supposedly lives in Hayward has never been in the chamber, has never emailed us, called us, nothing. And so, but here we are, right? In fact, I find it ironic that, you know, that the people who have submitted maps have primarily been non-Asian. And, and so here we are. And so, and so we are up here working with, with the materials that we have. So with that said... So with that said, I, I did have some comments, and I, and I wanted to just kind of keep, you know, kind of put this out here, because I know we're, we were sort of going around the edges and moving the lines around and stuff. And, and there was a comment that I heard a few times up here, and that was, you know, the identities of neighborhoods. And, and yes, I think through this mapping that we are trying to keep the neighborhood identities and together and intact. I think Councilmember Bonilla made a very good point the other day where, you know, the neighborhood, you know, the Bunker Hill neighborhood from, along Mission Boulevard from Carlos B. and Harder, I don't necessarily think that they identify with like Stonebri or, you know, the Highlands or, you know, Bailey Ranch, et cetera. But I also just sort of want to put out there that, you know, we're also going through this process in neighborhoods that have been, that have had their identities for, for generations, right? I mean, I mean, this has never been done before. And, and as much as I would like to make sure we keep intact all the identities of all the neighborhoods, I don't, I just, I don't know if we're sort of reaching towards a, too much of an i- an idealistic goal or an achievable goal. I, I did look at the, at the tweak that Councilmember Andrews made on that little part of Huntwood or Underwood and, and Gadding. I know that area very well. I was, I was born and raised in that neighborhood. And, you know, my, my friends and I used to joke around, "What side of Gadding do you, do you live on?" and so forth. But, you know, now, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the, the, drawing the lines here, and, you know, it's, that, that argument that we had when I was a kid, you know, 50 years ago or 40 something years ago, where I'm coming head-on to it tonight, so. But anyways, I guess my, my larger point is, is that, you know, unfortunately, we are going to have to carve into some of these neighborhood identities. I don't think any of us like it. I certainly don't like it, but, you know, you know, unfortunately, that's what this process has taken us. That's what happens when people who don't live in the city come into the city and tell us how to, you know, do things like this. They, they realign the integrity, not only of our, of our neighborhoods, but they also diminish the, the, the very uniqueness of our neighborhood identities. And I think, I think that conversation was very worthwhile up here. I also, you know, I was also thinking about, and I wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Syrup about this, and I know he has talked about it before, and, and Councilmember Bonilla also, around the, the Mission Boulevard corridor between, between Jefferson and Tennyson, which is, you know, that's where you get East 12th, 13th, 14th Street, right? Where, you know, the Bowman Elementary School is. And, and yes, unfortunately, they may, you know, maybe get carved out. But then I was thinking, you know, that might be a good thing because whoever is representing that district up in the hills, you know, just by their advocacy, you know, that, that little neighborhood will certainly get, will enjoy the benefits of that advocacy, right? And so I think, and, you know, and to some extent, while it's, while it's a, a small slice of the neighborhood, it will, you know, force whoever represents that, that area, you know, to come down from the hill and, and go, and go down to, you know, Mission and 12th, 13th, and 14th Street. And so, so I thought that was a, a, a good observation up here. I, let's see. I did have this question, and I don't know if, if, you know, if this is just semantics or what, but at what point would we decide, or is there a legal definition for this or a distinction of this between the, the words district, ward, or zone? Can we, as we get further along this process, I mean, I know we're saying districts right now, but, I mean, is there a, a legal, you know, something that, can we call these things, you know, districts or zones or wards? Or is that up to us, or is there a legal definition for that? Districts. Okay. So if we wanted to say, "We want zones," you would say, "No, we want districts." Okay. All right. Okay. Also, you know, I, I wanted to respond to the ranked choice voting comment, you know, and just, you know, out of all honesty, I'm against ranked, ranked choice voting. Those cities and those candidates who live in ranked choice cities, if you ask them to explain what is ranked choice voting, I challenge them to explain it, you know, in a way that is, you know, understandable. And I think even today, you have cities that are in ranked choice cities, and, you know, if you talk to, you know, everyday voters or everyday residents and you ask them, you know, "Explain ranked choice voting," they, you know, no one seems, no one seems to be able to explain it, except for maybe the registrar of voters, you know, and, and city clerks, right? But, so I would, I would, I would discourage us to not consider ranked choice voting in this process, but I think you were referring to in the, in years out and so forth, but that's okay. You know, I, you know, I was looking at Map 3. I've had a couple of conversations with a couple of people in the community who are pretty studied individuals, and, you know, they, they were, they weren't necessarily committed to Map 3, but, you know, it was something that piqued their attention. You know, I, my concern about Map 3 is that it does, you know, split the West Side Hayward right down the middle. And I understand that there's sort of a natural split with the 92, and, and I get it. I, I think Councilmember Syrup, you know, kind of convinced me to go to Map 1 with the tweaks, and, and I'm, I'm okay with that. But I think most, most importantly, and I, and I, and I want to, I want to just really make this comment. I, I really wanted to thank our consultants for moving us through this process, although I might have been a little bit testy, but I wanted to thank you for, for doing this. You know, these maps are a culmination of several different submissions, and I think you have expertly delivered some really, really equitable maps. You know, while, you know, people who have come in in the fourth quarter might say that, you know, there was, you know, no representation or no, you know, not a lot of input. I think there was input. I think there was a lot of input, actually, but I think what you have been able to do has not only garnered the support and the trust from all of us, but, I mean, respectfully, you have also garnished the support from the attorney, Mr. Rafferty. And, you know, and I think, you know, his, in fact, if, if I recall, I think he even said it himself here in the chamber, that he trusts your work. He trusts your, your ability to come up with good, equitable districts that, that get us to what we, that get us to where we need to be, right? And so I, I just wanted to say thank you for that. You and, and your colleague, I think, have done an excellent job. And, you know, so with that said, I will, you know, I'll lean to, you know, Map 1 with, and, and, you know, I, I wasn't really tracking the, the changes that Councilmember Syrup was, was doing, but, you know, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, take those suggestions. And, and I was trying to track what everyone else was saying, but I, I believe everyone else was... Oh, yeah. But I, I believe everyone else up here in the dais sort of agrees with Map 1. Councilmember Roach, I, I think you were the one that had some, some comments, but I, but generally speaking, Map 1?
Yeah, I think that was my priority. My, my sequencing was 1, I think I put it, 1, 3, 2, I think originally. So 1 was my, with the, with the suggested tweaks that we started with, and I'm okay with that.
And Councilmember Bonilla, what I, if I heard correctly. Okay, and then Andrews? Okay, and then Goldstein? Okay. Okay. So Councilmember Syrup wins the case for the day. And so what do you need from us tonight? Do you need a vote for, for, for adopting this? Or I know this doesn't come to us until October, but is that the direction you need? And, and do you need any more direction from us? That's the question. I, I see-
Mayor, oh, you don't have your iPad, but I've requested to speak, if that's okay.
I don't have my iPad, but, but yes, go right ahead.
Given that this is a public hearing, I think we're allowed to make a motion. Obviously, we can't finalize it because we have a few dates ahead, but I was wondering if we could put forward a motion tonight to submit this towards like the finalized map recommendation for the city. And if you'd like to make the motion, I'm happy not to, but-
Yeah, okay. Let me, I, I see the, the city attorney huddled over, and when he's huddled over, I tend to wait.
All right. Apologies, Mayor. The consultants are prepared to entertain a vote on District 1. With those adjustments, which they're comfortable with, that would allow the map to be posted in a timely fashion. The issue of sequencing, which is also part of this agenda, will carry over to the next hearing because the map that the council votes on really has to be in place in order to allow a, a robust discussion about sequencing.
Sure.
So we're prepared to-
Okay.
To see if there's a vote.
Okay. Before we take action, Councilmember Roach.
I just, thank you, Mayor. And to the city attorney, you know, the agenda, the timeline says that there's, September 10th is the deadline to submit communities of interest from other maps, and then September 17th, final maps are posted. So how does that, you know, make, how are we honoring that by choosing a map tonight?
Thank you for that question. So what we could do, if you're comfortable with Map 1, we could make that the finalist map and post that so that we can get public input on it. So we will, we will post it with that modification. Members of the public can take a look at it. We'll get some more feedback, and then the next time, and, and then also the attorneys can look at the whole sequencing conversation, come back with the discussion on that next time because they'll have to look at some statistics and so forth, come up with a proposal. And then at the next hearing, you can then vote on approving the map, and, you know, if you have any more modifications, we can do that, so.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that any public remaining, you know, any remaining public interest was still there. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
So if the public submits a different map, will we see those maps after this?
Of course. You can see, yeah, there's still time to give more feedback, and maybe somebody has, you know, has listened to, to all of you and comes up with, you know, some, some sort of magic little change that we can still incorporate, and we can still do that, and then we will show that to you. But we could make this like a finalist map and then just post it as such so that people don't have to look at, you know, three maps, two of which you're not likely to, to entertain.
Okay. Just repeating for the public, you can still submit a map-
Absolutely. You can still submit maps, communities of interest.
Until September 10th.
In particular, also, looking at Map, Map 1, what I, I would say to members of the public is make sure that your community of interest is not split. Maybe we don't know about your community of interest yet, and you're looking at this map, and you're seeing that it's split, then please let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Now, now since I'm thinking about it right now, are there cases where somebody who doesn't live in Hayward can submit a map? I mean, is that... Yeah.
Well, we don't verify where people come from, you know? So, I mean, that would broaden the, the process considerably.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that was it. Okay. So, and I apologize, Councilmember Syrup, I, I didn't track everything you said, so if, if you want to make the motion with the-
Is this map here? They made the modification.
Oh, they, oh, okay. So, so we're, so it's, it's Map, it's Map 1?
With the modification.
With the modifications. Oh, okay. Well, do you want to, you want to make the motion?
I'm moving to advance Map 1 with the modification to the finalist list.
One second.
Moved by Councilmember Syrup, seconded by Councilmember Roach. Madam City Clerk, do we need to take a roll, or if there's no objections, it will unanimously pass?
I think it would be a good idea to do a roll, to voice vote.
Okay, let's do a voice vote. Madam City Clerk, if you can take the vote.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Andrews?
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla Jr.?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
Councilmember Syrup?
Yes.
Councilmember Sermanio?
Mayor Salinas?
No. So it passes with six ayes, one no.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is adjournment. Our next meeting will be September 17th, 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, meeting adjourned.